The first thing we do, we have a request to adjourn Home Nature Incorporated. I have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have four decisions. First one being 2823 Andrew Starr, 14 Leighton Avenue.
I move you accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have 2826, 1050 Meadow Lane, LLC, 1049 Meadow Lane.
I move you accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2828 Douglas Bartelze, 48 Old Town Crossing.
I move you accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And 2829 Skyfall Lee LLC, 130 Lee Avenue.
I move you accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you guys have a copy of 1050 Meadow Lane?
I believe we do.
I could sneak that in.
I believe we have copies of everything.
I wouldn't think the less of them.
Do you want Skyfall? Do you want the Skyfall for me?
What number is that, 29?
1029, yeah.
I have a, no, I have a 23 and a 26, but I'm...
26, that's 2826, that's me.
You want 2826?
Yes, 26.
Isn't that a good declaration one? Is that what it is?
Yeah, that was a wetland.
Well, there's a decision, and it's a very short covered decision from me that I emailed a couple of days ago.
Here's the whole thing.
And then there's chick stuff that goes with it.
It's in here, it's here.
Oh, is it not with you? Okay, great.
Great, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Did you guys vote on that extension for that one?
That's coming up next.
I would...
I'm trying to find something for John here.
Oh, that's Skyfall. That's a good movie.
Skyfall.
Remember? It's a Bond, or is it depressing?
Yeah, got it, okay. And then we have a request, 2723 Abby Rosen, to extend the... Do you want to extend it, Gil?
It was a six-month extension, because it's almost, the work's almost finished, but we haven't done the C.O.G.
Okay.
Six months, that's what I requested.
Six months. I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, Rick, we're going to have a decision for Schoenfield also?
Yes, we have a negative declaration prepared by our environmental consultant and a wetland special permit prepared by our environmental consultant. And you can move to adopt both of those documents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need the Schoenfield?
Yeah, if I could get a copy of that.
Here's the whole thing.
So we're done with that one?
I think it's the whole thing.
Excellent.
I think he has the conditions in there too.
The conditions are here, so this is a short resolution.
Yeah.
So that's another case.
Oh, sorry.
That's all.
McCray, that's a new one. It takes us down to the last of the pending cases, which is 2757 Wickapock Pond Rehab Project.
Okay, on that one, if you recall, at the work session, there was various stuff that Chick said, you know, really wanted, and they hadn't provided any of that yet. So he was going to, I think he was going to notify them that there's no point in coming until they put that stuff together, so we should just adjourn it.
Okay. I have a motion on that?
I move that we adjourn 2757.
That's it. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That takes us down to, yes. You have a question?
My name is Dr. Draghi, and I reside on Wickapock Pond most of my life. And I'd just like to know what they applied for. What are they planning to do?
Well, they're hoping to clear out some of the phragmity on one particular piece of property.
And put in some wetland vegetation.
You know which piece of property that is?
I don't remember.
I don't remember, I don't have...
It was on the west side. It wasn't on the east side, on the west side of the pond.
Yeah, I'd like to know which property it is. I have a reason for asking. There was never a problem with that pond in all the decades that I've lived here. And about three or four years ago, a Marilyn Penn started a campaign to start to cut down the phragmities and the water lilies, mainly in front of her house, and it extended to a project from the entire pond. And I hired an attorney and I sent letters because I was very apprehensive about it. I was afraid of erosion and I was afraid of damage to my property. And they went ahead and they did it, and for the first time in all my life, you know that we have that toxic bloom on the pond. They did something. I have 30 feet of iridescent green algae in front of my house, and I took the effort to walk down the right-of-way and to look in front of Miss Penn's property. Down there, it's all nice and clear and open. All that was down there is now, at the south end of the pond, I have about 50 feet of water lilies choking everything. I had a muskrat in front of the house in the water. He's gone. I haven't seen any water birds this year, so I really have an interest in knowing what's going on with this.
Well, the case is open. They didn't show up tonight, and we had a lot of questions for them when the man was here last month.
Yes.
And that's probably why he's not here, maybe trying to, probably some answers for the questions we had.
All right, so when will he present himself again so I can be here?
Hopefully, I'll be the next month, in September.
All right.
September the 25th.
Because they really have done tremendous damage to Wickapock Pond. I'm very sorry to inform you of this. Excuse me?
The town trustees are the ones that came to us for variance to do the work.
But they were influenced by these people.
But you can go to the town trustee's office in the town also and get, they'll tell you exactly who they contracted. I think they'll give you information that you would need about what they did and how they did it.
Yes, I just wanted to tell you though, so whoever's responsible knows, they've really destroyed the pond, made it very toxic, as you know, it's been in the headlines of newspapers on Long Island. This is the first time that happened, and this is after they did whatever they did to that pond. So please, somebody keep an eye on it, because it's very, very heartbreaking and ecologically a catastrophe. Thank you.
Yeah, I think maybe you should go to the, go to Town Hall and, go to the office of the town trustees and see if they have any information on it, because they're in control of all the waterways, not us.
And their pitch was the health of the pond.
But they achieved the exact opposite.
Well, then that's who you should speak to.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us up to the first of the new cases.
We have some...
I have just a quick question.
Yeah.
I wondered, who has responsibility, if someone applies to you, what is your board's responsibility in this area, and what does it derive from?
For which application are you talking about?
Pardon me?
Which application? The pond?
Yes.
You want to have it come up?
Yeah, why don't you come up to the microphone, so you can get on the camera.
Oh, okay. Deborah Bates, Walnut Street, Southampton Village. I just wondered, in this discussion, what the role of this board is. They, someone needs to apply to you for a permit to do work.
We look at whatever they're doing in the way of landscaping or clearing on the upland adjacent to the pond.
Because it's adjacent to the wetland?
Yes, it's within our wetlands jurisdiction.
So what happens if something goes amiss, as this apparently has, and there's been some damage? Do you, who supervises the work?
The building department.
The building, the village building department?
Yes.
And is the access through the nature preserved by any chance, or how do people get in there to work? Do you happen to know?
I don't remember the details.
Isn't there an access from...
This case was up, was before us, like, a couple of years ago is when we granted some permits.
Mm-hmm. But I just wondered where the enforcement would be then through the building? They have to notify them when the work is being done and make sure it meets your conditions?
Each wetland special permit that this board issues has conditions in it prepared by our environmental consultant, and it's enforced by the building inspector, and sometimes there's inspections by our environmental consultant as well.
And if someone doesn't comply, who, and, you know, who...
If they don't comply and they don't respond when they're told, then, then it's just like any other violation. We can, we can enforce it.
So if I'm understanding correctly, there was work done with a permit and there was damage, and now they're, the applicants are coming to do more work?
Well, as far as the damage goes...
But they're applying to us...
I don't know if there was damage.
This is the first report.
Well, if there's an algae bloom...
Well, there's algae blooms everywhere, but I don't know.
Not in that...
You don't know if this caused the algae bloom.
You don't think it's related?
I don't know.
Yeah, we have no idea.
Did Mr....
There was a lot of phragmity, which are an invasive species, which they're trying to get control of, so, you know, what came first, the chicken or the egg here, you know? It's, you know, you're trying to getting rid of one and then...
I think in one of the articles, it said that there had been a lot of, the sediment had been disturbed in the course of the work, and that had caused, I don't know, I mean, I'm not trying to...
It could disturb the sediment, yeah.
Yeah.
You see that.
So who supervise, and when they actually doing the work, who's supposed to be watching them?
The person that made the application to us, and that's the one that we're waiting to hear some more details from.
And that was the trustees of the...
But he's not here tonight.
I see. So then it'll come up all in September, then? Okay.
We hope so, if he shows up.
Or when, whenever?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Now we're down to the new cases, 2830 Colin McCray, 3rd 73 Meadow Lane.
The applicant Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. As the application filed indicates, this is a fairly straightforward application for an aggregate side yard variance to permit the construction of two one-story additions on the east and west sides of the existing residence as shown on the map submitted. It's important to note at the outset that because this is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming lot, it's entitled to the automatic, what we call, four-tenths relief clause, the minimum aggregate side yards for a principal building. And when one does the calculation, as I indicated in my application, the minimum side yard in this case is 10 feet. And as you can see from the drawings submitted, both of the additions, one on the east and the one on the west, meet the 10-foot minimum side yard requirement. And we need an aggregate side yard variance amounting to 3.89 feet. So I would submit that that is a relatively minor variance. Now, it's important to note that when I submitted the application, one of the things I gave you was a copy of a 1992 variance that was brought on behalf of its owner by someone other than myself, and there was someone other than Mr. DePietre sitting in that chair. And when I reviewed that, and if you review that application, it would appear that those variances were not necessary. And I think I've submitted some information to you to support that, both with the initial application and then subsequently, I submitted information showing that the lot is a lawful single and separate lot entitled to the relief. And the reason I say that is that that application requested relief from the code setbacks, which are actually the same now as they were then. And in fact, the application, which was for a second-story addition on the north side of the house, conforms with the four-tenths clause, so no variance was necessary, and therefore, I would take the position that that decision has, has no bearing on this property, including any conditions that were associated with it. In other words, in my opinion, today, or back in 1992, that addition could have been built with a building permit and ARB approval. So I understand there may have been a question raised by a neighbor about the condition that was imposed in that decision that said you couldn't enclose the space below the second story addition, which currently is a screened porch. So I think it's important to note that that really should not be an issue, and I would ask you to refer to my submission if you have any questions. I submitted not only the decision, but also the application and the survey that was the basis of. As far as the proposed application is concerned, the westerly addition is nine feet by 13 feet, and the purpose of it is to enlarge the existing very small bathroom and bedroom that are located in that area. The easterly addition, measuring 8.9 feet by 13 feet, would enable the enlargement of the very, of a very small kitchen. And the existing bathroom that I talked about earlier is only about 42 square feet, and the existing kitchen is only about 168 square feet. I submitted separately calculations from the architect, dealing with lot coverage, and the height of the proposed additions, and also gross floor area, which shows that all of those factors are complied with by this proposed construction. In addition, I submitted, I guess on the 18th, copies of letters from various neighbors voicing support for the application. And I understand that an additional letter of support from O.R.S. Bliss, who lives generally across the street, was also submitted. Just so you know, the maximum increase in the gross floor area, excuse me, is 9.9%. So if there's any question of 50% expansion, and by the way, only a very small portion of one of the additions needs variance. Put another way, if I were constructing only one of the additions, I wouldn't need a variance, I could do it as a right. There's only a question of about, of three feet, 3.89 feet on the other addition, which needs a variance. So we would certainly fall within the 50% expansion rule. We fall well under the maximum gross floor area for this, for this piece of property. In fact, when I compute, I computed the area of one of the additions that violates the aggregate side yard, I calculate it's only 50.6 square feet, or only 2.1%. So it's, I would say it's a miniscule, a miniscule amount. I would note again that these are one-story additions with a maximum height from existing rate of 11.5 feet. And let's see, I would submit that there's no feasible alternative to this construction, given the location of the rooms in the existing house. They are both expansions of existing facilities. There would be no increased demand on services or on the environment, without any, any more bedrooms, without any more bathrooms, we're simply enlarging existing, existing conditions. As far as an effect on the neighborhood is concerned, I have a couple of things to give you for the record, which I think will show that there would be no impact on the character of the neighborhood as well because of the extensive screening that's located on almost all sides of this property. And I have views taken from various angles, which I will give up to you. The first one, if I can get it open here. The first one I have here is a view looking from the Meadow Club to the south, and you can see here, there's an hour that you see the peaked roof of the second floor of the house, the proposed additions would be totally invisible. I can hand those up. The Meadow Club, by the way, has submitted a letter in support of the application. On the east side, property owned by Howard. I'm looking at the back of the house, here's where the easterly addition would come out. You can see the vegetation that's, that's there, which is substantial. And then finally, if you look at the, the front of the house, that's from the street side, that's what you see, it's heavily, heavily vegetated. You also have a copy of the property to the west, if you bear with me one second, I'll get that and present that to you too. Looking to the west, house to the west, you can see, again, there's substantial vegetation to screen that addition. Again, it's only a 11-foot tall addition from that westerly property owner. Now, what I also did, just to see how that, these additions would relate to the properties on the east and west, because arguably, they're the ones most impacted, I got from the building department, a survey of the Katz property located to the west, which, as you may remember, was the subject of a number of hearings before you. And what I've done, you can see on this survey, the location of the westerly portion of the McCray house is shown. Obviously, that's the part that's closest to the property line. Remember where we're adding is set in. And as you can see, when you get to where our addition's going to be, that's where the Katz house actually gets the furthest away from the common property line of anywhere along that, that sideline. Now, this is a copy, as I say, of their property, which was last revised February of 2010. So I would submit that that's, that's the maximum space that this addition could have from their property. Similarly, I have a copy of the survey of the Howard property to the, to the east. Again, you'll see that the location of the McCray house, which is conveniently shown. And again, it's located to the north, where the Howard house is the furthest away from the property line of any of its construction. So I would submit that, given those facts and given the screening, that there would be absolutely no impact of a negative nature on the, these neighbors. Bear in mind, again, the minimum side yard conforms, so we're not looking for setback relief from either of these, either of these properties.
10 feet.
Let's get to 10 feet.
10 feet.
Right, and that's what the code says. As I say, I could have one of these additions without any variances. It's only because I have two, and the, when you add the aggregate up, I'm 3.89 feet short. I think that, I don't have to say there's too much more. I know that this board, generally, when aggregate side yard relief is being considered, is something that you tend to look a little bit more favorably on than when you're looking actually to get closer to a property line than the zoning permits. So I would, I would submit that this is a relatively minor application. Also, as you know, because it's in the R-120 district, the pyramid law doesn't apply, but even if it did, we'd comply with it. It's an 11-foot tall addition, and you know, when you do the pyramid law, you go up, I think it's five feet from the sidelines and then 45 degrees.
So it doesn't touch it?
Doesn't, wouldn't even touch it, even if it did apply. So that's all I belabor you with tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
We have something here from Arthur Katz.
Yes, I saw that.
Who owns the house to the west, 81.
Yeah, I, I saw that, and I think he wanted it read, and that's, that's fine.
Yes, and he's got some questions. One, the architect's drawing did not indicate the height of the proposed additions.
Well, we have submitted a separate letter from the architect that gives that.
Drawings do not indicate the gross floor area calculations?
I say we submitted that in a separate letter, so it's in the record.
Survey is from 2004, does not reflect current site conditions. My house is shown incorrectly, and I believe that Mr. McCray's pool equipment has moved closer to my property line.
Okay, well...
Any information whether he's moved the equipment for the pool?
No, I, I've left a message with my client, I haven't heard back from him, but I would certainly say that if the pool equipment is not in a conforming location, then they can perform.
I am confused about whether an unconforming house is being increased by more than 50%.
Now, we've given numbers on that too, from the architect.
The open porch appears to be coming space for living. It is being enclosed, which is prohibited, and the variance issued by this board in January 23, 1992.
And again, I address that because that decision, in my opinion, does not have any validity, because that variance didn't need to be given in the first place. So in other words...
We gave it, though.
Yeah, but, but the fact of that, he didn't need it, and so any condition...
Why didn't you tell me that in 1992?
I wasn't handling it.
Didn't do it.
I won't tell you who was, you can read who it was, it wasn't me. But it, it's not necessary, and by the way, there is case law similar to this that says if you have something that becomes unnecessary, the condition isn't binding, and I can give you that if you want.
He also goes on to say, the existing non-conforming is less than a foot off both sides of the property lines. Should be 15 feet. Well, the house is there, right?
The house is there, the existing house is...
Been there forever.
Been there forever. That's correct.
The property is already afforded relief, and now they're asking for even more. The fact that the house is extremely non-conforming should not be used in order to increase the proposed additions, which is 10 feet off the front property line.
Again, as I say, the 10 feet is a conforming setback.
I have, I have reviewed everything that was, has been previously, previously submitted on this application. Number one, the four-tenths clause does apply, so the minimum side yard setback requirement is 10 feet. So they're not asking for a variance from either sideline. It's the total of both that need a variance. The total of both under the four-tenths clause is 23.89, and the total of both of these is 20. So they do need a total side yard variance of 3.89 feet. But both, minimum side yard setbacks are conforming. I also looked at the 1992 application and decision that was submitted by the applicant's attorney, along with everything else that was submitted, and it didn't need a variance. I don't know, you know, the four-tenths relief clause, apparently, I'm guessing that the then, the attorney who then represented the applicant in 1992, I'm guessing he, either he wasn't aware of the four-tenths clause or didn't perceive it, because he was asking for variances from the setbacks if there were no four, four-tenths relief. So Gil is correct, it did, did not need a variance in 1992, and, you know, that, that is a correct statement. But we still need, I think we should adjourn it for all purposes. We have a request, letter request from the neighbor Katz, that says they're unable to be here tonight, asking for an adjournment, and he does raise that issue, so I think we should adjourn it for all purposes.
Okay, so moved.
I would just like to refer to this application. Now you can so move it.
I move you adjourn for all purposes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't get this, this letter, and I didn't see it. We have one from O.R.S. E. Bliss, 88 Meadow Lane. With respect to the application for variance at 73, my wife and I live on Old Town at 88 Meadow Lane, across the street from 73. I reviewed the application on a native sand impound in McCray, from a variance to permit the construction of two small one-story additions to their existing residence at 73 Meadow Lane. I have reviewed the materials provided to me, and wish to go on record as being in support of the application. So we have one for and one anti.
Actually, you had, I think, three or four other ones in support, to which I submitted separately. You should have had them under a separate...
I don't see them, but...
There is, in our work session packet, there was a whole bunch of letters of support that were, they were in my...
They didn't make it into their main file. But we could go on the record as saying that there are other letters in support.
Yes, including them, just, just to be clear about it.
Do you have any names offhand?
I do, I got it right here. Yeah, one second. I know it's the Howards, who live immediately to the east of it.
Okay.
Linda Hackett, who lives directly across the street, almost directly across the street from it. The Madonius, who live one lot over to the west, and the Meadow Club, which is obviously right to the north.
All right.
So I'm sure that those are all I saw.
So we'll have, those names are now in the record.
Yes.
So now let's adjourn it for all purposes.
Okay, so moved, re-adjourn then.
I second, or second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the application 2831, Mark and Andrew Polsky, 145 Breeze Lane.
For the applicant John Bennett, I handed up the affidavits of posting and mailing. This is an application to construct a 515-square-foot one-story addition in the rear of a property on, at 145 Breeze Lane, and a 103-square-foot roof porch addition to the south side of the residence on this lot, which is a pre-existing non-conforming lot in terms of width. Therefore, it's entitled to the four-tenths relief. I'm hoping that you'll agree with me that this is a rather, rather minor request here.
Don't always say that, John.
Well, no, I don't always, because sometimes I'm asking for a fair amount of relief, but I think this one qualifies. We need a little bit of help off to the, to the right, that's, I guess that's to the, to the, to the north, the northerly part, at 11.4 feet. The required minimal, minimum lot width under four-tenths relief is 12.3, so we're asking for .9 feet, a little, less than, less than a foot for the minimum side yard. And then, as we have this pre-existing situation, we would need 6.5 feet of total relief. But as it relates to the, the minimum side yard, we're almost there, about .9 feet. And, and really, what is happening here is an attempt just to put an addition well within the existing... the existing, the line of the existing house as it relates to the, the northerly, the northerly side yard. So although, yes, under the interpretation of the village code, we are increasing the degree of nonconformity, conformity, we're not coming any closer. Actually, we're coming, I think, one point because of the angle of the, of the lot. We're coming point one foot closer at eleven point four feet. And, and the bulk of the addition, except for this little roof porch addition, which is a, as much as anything for the ability to sit out front and also, I think architecturally complements the existing house, the bulk of the addition is in the rear, so it will not affect the streetscape. And it is not an attempt to increase the ability of the house to house more people. There's no net bedroom increase in the house. There are currently five bedrooms and five will remain in the house. Again, there's no attempt whatsoever to, to, to increase that. The, so the house, it's, again, it's a one-story addition, so it will not affect any light and shadow on surrounding properties. I, I don't think there's any neighborhood result of such an, almost imperceptible variance, particularly as it relates to the minimum side yard setback relief. We meet it on one side, we need point nine feet of relief on the other. And again, the idea is to, is to square off the existing building in the rear. If you take a look at the architect's plans, you can see on, I think it's A one point zero four, which is the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth drawing, the first floor plan, the addition, its intent essentially is to expand the kitchen area, which is shown with the cathedral ceiling, because it's a one-story addition, and the dining room area. So again, there's no attempt to increase the ability of the house to house other, other folks. The architect also did a very helpful plot plan and zoning analysis, and you can see that, well, we're well underneath the required floor coverages and gross floor area. So even though we do need some variance relief, we're staying within all the other required square footage coverage and VFA requirements. Again, I, I think just because of the minimum size of the request, I would respectfully urge that there could be no impact on the, on the neighbors, and, and the, the request for relief is a, is a minimal one. I don't want to belabor the point unless the board has any questions. And I also, I don't want to be presumptuous either. I wouldn't, but I, I think it's a fairly small request.
Would you have to do some demo here?
Um, yes, I think, yes, that's fair to say, because it would be some demo. With any project, you've got to do some demo.
There's no problem about the pool, right?
No, the pool conforms in terms of coverage. It's pool setback is twenty feet, and I also made sure that the, not only was the pool equipment twenty feet from the side and rear yard, but we've screened it. I just wanted to make sure that there was no problem, not only from a setback point of view, from a visual point of view. When the survey first came in, I noticed there was no mention of the, the pool equipment, so we had them put it on there and have it screened. The pool is, again, conforms to the coverage requirements, and it conforms to the twenty-foot setback requirements. The coping is a little, the coping is a little bit further, is closer to the, to the property lines, but unequivocally, John Foster has told me many times that they, you measure to the water line. And then there's a, there's a very, very small pool house. Actually, when the survey first came in, it said, it said bathroom. And I said, well, you have to call it something bathroom. You have to call it pool house. All, all they have in there is a bathroom, so it's very, very small, and it meets the minimum side yard setback.
And it just has to be ten feet off the line?
Yes, it just has to be ten feet off. So all of the, all of the, the additional proposed improvements do comply, and we've made attempts to make sure that they have minimal impact on the, on the surrounding neighborhood.
And the extension is no closer to the lot line than the existing house?
None whatsoever. It's actually, because of the, the angle of the, the property line, it's, it's point one foot, which I guess is a little bit more than an, an inch. Now, that's maybe we all should have gone metric. I get confused when, when I see points after feet, but.
Well, it's eleven point five, and as you go toward the front, it's eleven point seven.
Right. Well, it's eleven point five at, at where the, I guess, Breeze Lane, it's where the north westerly part of the house is at eleven point five, and the extension is at eleven point four.
You're getting further away.
Excuse me?
You're getting further away.
No.
No, I'm getting closer.
Closer by point.
Point.
An inch and a something.
It's like an, an inch and a little something.
That's pre-existing.
So again, I, I, you know, I don't, I certainly wouldn't, I'd hate to be presumptuous, but it seems like something that was similar to relief that you looked favorably upon, and I think it's rather minor. Again, the minimum side yard setback is, not that we don't need aggregate relief, but even that's about six and a half feet. It's not a lot. We do, we do meet the, we are shy less of about, we're shy by less than a foot of the minimum side yard setback. And it's a great benefit for the applicant. Really makes the house work a lot better, but again, not increasing any bedrooms, which is actually something I think, you know, in some of these neighborhoods on the small lot that the village should, should pay attention to, because I've noticed that some people are starting to cram a lot of bedrooms into small lots. So I was, I was very glad to see that, that there's no, there's no bedroom increase, increase.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Rick?
No questions. I just want to confirm that you're not asking for a pyramid law variance.
No, no, no. Well, we're under the, we're under the existing, it's a one-story building, yeah. Well, in retrospect, I should have had the architect show the pyramid, but it's, it sort of speaks for itself. It's under the existing ridge, and it's one-story.
You're not asking for it, so.
Nope, 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 nope.
If it doesn't.
Doesn't mean.
If it is one, then you'd have to come back.
Yep.
What would you like to do? Hold it open, or I'll close it for the city?
Is there anybody in the, did we ask the public yet?
I'm going to ask that right now. If there's anyone out in the public who'd like to refer to this application. No, there's not.
I can do it if you want.
Oh, good.
Let's do it.
Applicant requests a minimum side yard variance to eleven point four feet from the northerly line, northerly sideline, and a total side yard variance to twenty-four point three feet in order to permit a proposed one-story addition to the existing house. Period. Pursuant to the four tent's relief clause, the applicable minimum side yard requirement is twelve point three feet, and the applicable total side yard requirement is thirty point eight feet. Period. In this case, the existing house is located eleven point five feet from the easterly line, I'm sorry, from the northerly sideline, and twelve point eight feet from the westerly, no, make that southerly sideline.
It's confusing.
Period. Under these circumstances, the extent of the requested variances is, are minimal, and we find that the requested variances will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Therefore, we, we grant a minimum side yard variance to eleven point four feet and a total side yard variance to twenty-four point three feet in order to permit the proposed one-story addition.
There's, there's a little, there's that little proposed roof porch, which is not inhabitable. It's a hundred square feet, and I, because it, it, there's no further.
That, that conforms.
It wouldn't conform to the aggregate side yard, though, I don't think. It conforms to the minimal side yard, but it would also need aggregate relief.
Well, it hasn't been advertised.
Yeah, for God's sakes, that's in my application.
I don't even know if it's asked for. The data that's in the application relates to the one-story addition.
Okay, let's see. Hold on, let me read my.
But the total, are you talking about?
It's this right here, Rick.
This thing here?
No, 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 this, this conforms. This, this, this extension of the house conforms. There's this little roofed porch area, because it's not getting any closer, but it would still need aggregate relief, even though it meets the minimum. I'm sure I put it in my, I apologize, that may be in my application.
Well, maybe it's in the application, but it's not advertised.
Okay, well, why don't I, hmm.
Let's see, that's.
Huh, all right, well, you know what? I know they're anxious to get constructing. If it's okay, if you could grant that, I'll just come back and ask for that little roof porch area again. With the, I don't want to, I don't want to, just because I know they're anxious to get, I just don't want to get, I don't want to get penalized for, what's the word?
Bootstrapping.
Not bootstrapping, not putting it all in one.
Project segmentation.
Project segmentation.
Good word, good word.
Yeah, if I could, could, I know they're anxious to get constructing.
Well, I don't have any problem in adopting the decision that I've already dictated.
Yeah, oh, that's, that'd be great, yeah.
It's just that we can't cover the other thing, because.
Absolutely, as long as you don't.
It wasn't advertised.
As long you don't yell at me when I come back for that little hundred-square-foot porch.
Yell anyway, but that's.
Okay, why are you yelling?
I might not get it. Nobody's going to yell.
We'll say it quietly.
Say it quietly.
So we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Happy Labor Day.
Thank you, you have a great Labor Day, guys. Thanks for doing it tonight.
This is the zoning board of the Village of Southampton. Is it?
Yahoo.